...harm such as they're left in a vehicle with the windows rolled up and you know in the summertime or even spring and fall, the temperatures are high enough it doesn't take long for heat exhaustion to overcome a child and a child can be injured or even die from that. Then that type of situation can be dealt with under a state statute. I have some copies for the council under Cruelty to Juveniles which is Title 14, Section 93. And that's the intentional or criminally negligent mistreatment or neglect by an adult of a child who's under the age of seventeen where unjustified pain or suffering is caused, which would be harm to the child, physical harm to the child. That's a serious statute. That's the penalty after conviction is from a thousand dollar fine up to ten years imprisonment with or without hard labor, which would be a state penitentiary offense. If a child is not harmed, but which I think the vast majority of these had the potential for harm, but there was no actual physical harm to the child, that would come under either Alexandria Code of Ordinances, Section 15-90, which is child desertion. And there's a companion, it's basically taken from the state statute, which is almost identical, which is 14:93.2.1, child desertion. And that's the intentional or criminally negligent exposure to a child under the age of ten by a person who has a care custody control to a hazard or danger which the child can't anticipate or protect themselves from. So leaving a child unattended, especially a very young child, three years old or five years old, something like that, in a vehicle or for a traffic period or in traffic or the things that the chief has talked about, that would certainly fit. The more serious cases automatically, the felonies have to be referred to the district court. The less, where the child desertion has occurred, that can be prosecuted in Alexandria City Court as a misdemeanor or in the district court as a misdemeanor. Now, we also can do this, the Alexandria City Court is probably due to the more expeditious handling of crimes because they don't have felonies, they don't have jury trials, they don't have all that that sort of clogs things up. That docket can move a little faster and we can get a little better result, I think, by trying those cases in city court. Now, the only thing that would be appropriate to try a desertion case, that is a non-harmful case where no physical harm has occurred, in district court is the penalty even for simple desertion is enhanced by mandatory thirty day jail sentence for a second offense. So it has an escalation clause in it to be sure that a person who's a repeat offender gets some jail time on the second go around. Well, if you do the city ordinance, then you can't necessarily enhance it, the enhancement doesn't apply. There is a procedure which I'm happy to do for you, and there's a procedure where I can authorize city prosecutors to prosecute state misdemeanors in city court. And I have a good working relationship with the city court personnel, the judge, the prosecutors and the clerks over there, they have a good cooperation. And I'd be more than happy to do that to assist in trying to solve this problem, to do what we can to expedite these cases and get them handled in the most efficient case and still have justice be done. So you always have to be a little careful, you know, about rushing to judgment, people have to have their due process, but these things need to be dealt with and they need to be dealt with now. So I'm proposing that we sort of, I'll get with Mr. Johnson and Mr. Gist and Ms. Mathier who does some prosecution, she's one of my prosecutors, but she also prosecutes in city court on a part-time basis. And I'll meet with them and we'll sit down and see if we can't put our heads together. Now, we'll meet with the chief and assistants and all that, we'll get some plan to try to handle these things in an expeditious manner and be sure that there's some publicity too. That's always helpful to warn people that if you engage in this type of conduct, this is not just a, some kind of little problem that you might get a traffic ticket, this thing, somebody will go to jail in these things. So especially in repeat or egregious cases, one of the ones that the chief mentioned. So I would propose that we sort of put our heads together and work jointly on this and see if we can head this problem off at the pass before one of these children are harmed or worse than that dies from a traffic accident or getting run over or from a heat prostration issue or something like that. Because these are serious cases and they're fraught with harm, you know, young children can't protect themselves and they don't have good judgment about what's harmful or not. And I propose we do whatever we can to do this. And I'm happy to work with the chief and prosecutor and the council and mayor on this. We're just happy to do that, offer any assistance that we can do.
I appreciate your company. You definitely shed a light on something that I'm anxious about, our city attorney coming back with the program. They expedite these cases that are coming before us. As I said, more interested in preventing, putting information out to the public via Channel 4 to make sure that, I would say it's another that may be visiting our area are aware of vehicles that may have bad materials. Just my secretary reported, we may have actually been walking by and looking at any cars and maybe just that they hit me, but we'll wait another time, we'll need the city attorney to come back with something that we can do in concert to alleviate this problem and maybe do something even on the first offense, maybe like parenting.
We will, there are, the judge has many remedies available, especially if he suspends part of the sentence, which would require counseling or parenting classes or various things that would educate somebody to tell them what a serious situation this is and to try to prevent a subsequent recurrence, which will, of course, might result in serious harm to the child. But my door's open to the mayor and council and city attorney and the chief and everybody, so I'm here to help any way I can, I'm available to you.
Thank you, Mr. James.
Thank you.
That's our most valuable asset.
I have number two to this to hear and update from this Melinda Anderson on the historic survey. Ms. Anderson?
Yes, sir. Could you give us just a few minutes to pick up a computer right here?
While you do that, we're going to deal with item number one, which is discuss employees receiving December 24th and December 31st off of the holiday. Employees may be misleading because I'm going to deal with two, those are our unclassified employees, Donna and Nancy Fields, Donna Jones and Nancy Fields. I think they're worried that, I think the state's already done something. And with the pleasure of the council, I would entertain a motion to award them December 24th and 31st out.
Both of them?
Both of them, just standing here, if you will, their motion. He's thinking twice about it. Move by Eric, second by, you are true. What's that, full council? Can't even wait to, we're going to get technical enough one day to have this where you're doing the ceiling, you certainly.
I think Greg Menick would really appreciate that.
They'd probably be able to afford in the next several months a new stand to put that on too. It is going to be mounted.
If we can't afford a stand, we get that by hand.
Take the hair and get the thing.
My curtain's out before I start talking.
That's okay. You've done the lights, that can start.
Well?
Okay, Eric.
Well? Good afternoon, if we can, there it is, hopefully it'll stay up there. I'm Melinda Anderson with the Historic Preservation Commission and several months ago you all approved the professional services agreement with Chris Williams in order for us to conduct the historic survey, which is required by our ordinance. This is just a little prelude to what Chris has developed and we are very excited about it, it's on the cutting edge and he is going to demonstrate, this is part of District One, this is downtown and the part that he's already done about, what you said, Chris, twice as much as this already?
Yeah, we got a problem with that.
Okay. A third to almost a half of Historic District One, which is from the river to I-49 and Kason Street to Rapids, has been completed. What we'll be able to do is pull up an address like 824 Beauregard Street and when you click on it, they've taken digital pictures, anything that's unique about the structure, they'll be able to document. And then the most important part is the historic survey sheet that's required by the State Historic Preservation Office is on here and it's digital and we'll be able to pull it up. And it's been filled out with all the appropriate information and any history of the building and that sort of thing. The other thing that is being done with this survey is that there's a link, and it's a property information sheet that a realtor or anyone could pull up and it'll give Senate District, City District, Ward, Fire, all of that type of information. I'm not even sure what that information is, but it's just property information, zoning for schools, that kind of thing. So there's lots of opportunity for this survey where we can layer information. Our main goal right now is to do the historic survey part and then if so desired, we could layer additional information under this program. But Chris Williams and his staff are the ones that have put this together and if you all have any questions for him, feel free to ask him. Also, several of our commission members have volunteered with Chris and we've got some real pretty lime green vests and volunteer name badges that they're wearing too and gathering that information. So, if you have any questions. This was just to show you a little bit about what we're doing and where we're going with this.
It is impressive. The main thing is that we also be able to link it to our website, so we.
Yes, sir.
Have some work to do, also references with Channel 4, hopefully we'll have somewhere as to where we're going with Channel 4 at the next meeting.
Right.
This, I mean, it's a great program, I think it's good for those that are visiting our area.
It will be color coded, the green spaces right now, I think, are literally just that, greens and vacant spaces, no buildings, not vacant buildings, but the red.
We have it, basically four basic categories, residential, commercial, government and nonprofit. And then there's a historical aspect and a non-historical aspect to all four of those categories. So we'll have basically eight colors plus the green, which is vacant. So anybody who looks, pulls this map up, there's a wealth of information there other than just historic preservation information.
We're required by the survey to do every single structure, not just historic structures. So it ended up being a little bit more in depth than we had initially planned on, but it will be a very thorough survey once it's completed.
And it's also, some of the white is our parking lot, so if somebody's looking for parking spot for some kind of activities going on, that they pull this map up and find that too.
It will be, portions of it will be on our website, I'm not for sure right now what privacy issues as far as landowners or whatever, but we'll get all that straightened out. But our website is, give it a little plug, alexandriahtc.org and it can be linked to the city's website. And if anyone has any questions, feel free to call my office, I'd be glad to talk to them about it.
I think I've been big on this signage and talked to, talked to mine as recently as today, I think Chris and I talked about it. We've got to tie in something too, even for those that are kind of driving pathways to reference whether it's management or whether it's a particular structure where a missed one, where it's an offensive to the property owners. I think we have some in the bright room, we probably have the best untold story when it comes to historic properties across the state, so whatever we can do as a body, I'm certain we're just anticipating, not just financially, but throughout time that we can volunteer as officials, so let it go.
I will, and we have several programs that we're working on, we'll be coming back to you all as a full council to help us with those things. We're looking forward to helping save what's left of historic Alexandria.
Okay. Anderson, come back as often as you like, just don't ask for money. That's his quote.
I can't promise that, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa Chris. Anything else need to come before the Economic Development Committee? Hearing none, ladies and gentlemen.
The City Council, meeting with companies of artists, regular council agenda Tuesday, November 6, 2007. We have the invocation. Okay, by Mr. Smith and played by Mr. Lawson.
State precinct.
Now, yes, I'm having the Father be come before you this afternoon. We want you to continue your blessings and keep us leading God us in this world. Again, we want to thank you for being so good, being so kind, thank you for walking with us daily, thank you for our help and strength. I will help the Father, we want to bless this city, bless this state, I will help the Father, give us the wisdom and power to carry on this meeting the way that you see fit. He blesses us, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic whose existence, on our nation, on God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to D.R. roll column still.
Mr. Marshall.
President.
Mr. Fowler.
Yeah.
Mr. Johnson.
Brother.
Mr. Lawson.
Mr. Silver.
Mr. Smith.
Yeah.
Mr. Hobbs.
Here.
Mr. President, you have a question?
Okay, we go to eat, the consent calendar.
Seven illegal.
That's in five. Move by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Lawson. Discussion, all in favor? Oppose motion carries. Let's go to F. Ordinance for final adoption subject to public hearing.
Number twenty, to consider final adoption of an ordinance, authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for spun, pre-stressed wood pole equivalent concrete poles for the electric distribution department.
Move.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose motion carries.
Number twenty-one, to consider final adoption of an ordinance, authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for McDonald Street drainage improvements, phase three.
Move.
Move by Mr. Lawson, second by Mr. Smith. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose motion carries.
Mr. President, item number twenty-two needs to be delayed for two weeks. Number twenty-three, to consider final adoption of an ordinance, authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for wire and cable for the electric distribution department.
True.
Move by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Fowler. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose motion carries.
Number twenty-four, to consider final adoption of an ordinance, authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for mobile fuel trailers for the water department.
Move. Second.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Smith. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose motion carries.
Number twenty-five, to consider final adoption of an ordinance, authorizing acceptance of a twenty foot wide drainage and utility servitude located adjacent to Tennesse and Oak subdivision on property owned by Belina Farms.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose motion carries.
Number twenty-six, to consider final adoption of an ordinance, authorizing acceptance of a fifteen foot wide utility servitude located in Lot Two of Metroplex subdivision, phase one.
Move. Second.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Smith. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose motion carries.
Number twenty-seven, to consider final adoption of an ordinance, authorizing acceptance of the dedication by White Development of an electrical servitude located in a 1.763 acre tract of land situated at the intersection of Jackson Street Extension and Elizabeth Street.
Move, sir.
Move by Mr. Lawson, second by Mr. Fowler. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose motion carries.
Number twenty-eight, to consider final adoption of an ordinance, authorizing the mayor to execute a perpetual rental and electric service agreement with Silverleaf Estates subdivision to be supplied with streetlights in accordance with Section 26-84L.
Move.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Silver. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose motion carries.
Number twenty-nine, to consider final adoption of an ordinance, authorizing the mayor to execute a perpetual rental and electric service agreement with Penn Oak Crossing subdivision to be supplied with streetlights in accordance with Section 26-84L.
Move. Second.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Smith. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose motion carries.
Who was the low bid on twenty-one, McDonald Street?
It was KDC Construction Company.
Who was that?
KDC.
KDC.
Uh huh, I'm not sure where they're from.
Jane, Mr. Branch, is that the same one had the contract, KDC?
Which one is that?
Oh, McDonald.
McDonald.
Yes.
Okay.
That's how you name. Okay, number thirty, to consider final adoption of an ordinance, authorizing acceptance of a subdivision plot for younger commercial park lots one and two.
Move. Second.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose motion carries.
Number thirty-one, to consider final adoption of an ordinance, amending Article Three, Section 10-35 through Section 10-43 of the Alexandria City Code pertaining to the small and emerging business development program.
Move. Second.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Smith. Discussion, all in.
We have amendments.
Be an amendment to that, we're.
We have seven amendments.
Can we move on to amendments that's recommended about?
Okay, move by Mr. Lawson, second by Mr. Fowler, amendments. For you to care to.
That's on amendments on it. We're moving on.
Your first vote will be on the amendments as read, I can reread them or you can wave that.
No, no.
First vote would be on amendments as amended with the mayor's too technical.
Well, he's saying drown the water.
After you vote on the committee recommendations and you would vote on the bill.
Okay, all in favor? Oppose. Motion passed by amendment.
Okay.
Okay, now, your permission.
Amendment.
Okay, as amended, yes.
All in favor?
Okay, both. Motion carries. Okay, we'll go to G. Committee.
To me and Mr. President, this is an ambitious program, a lot of us working on this, and I think it's as objective as it can be, and I think it would be beneficial for the community to do a good job, a great job.
Thank you.
Mr. Jennings also wrote on it. Well, she did bring the documents along. She did a great job. I say the illustrations were fun. And she's going to be working on the implementation starting in the morning. Did he do that correctly? But I did a tremendously good job, thank you.
Okay, we go to G. Committee.
Finance Committee, Mr. Lawson.
No report.
Public Works Committee, Mr. Silver.
This is request the council authorize the mayor into a cooperative endeavor agreement with Belina Farms for the relocation of electric utility facilities necessary to accommodate the construction of Tennesse and Oak subdivision phases eight and nine.
Move.
Induction.
Please second.
Isn't that the one we, didn't we just act on this?
That's what I was trying to see.
We've done that. Nobody's got to do it for the full council.
No, we did one and.
Put it out of committee.
No, we did one and.
Now, I believe this is a different.
It's different, yeah.
This is the cooperative endeavor agreement.
The other one is a capital budget for McDonald Street and Drainage. This will amend the 2007, 2008 capital budget adding funds for the McDonald Street and Drainage Project in order to await the bid, award the bid.
Move, sir.
And this goes, item goes back to Public Works. Mr. Silver, you have another item.
I thought we finished this. Only one violation so far, I think I've done well. This has been going on all day. And the nicest thing about it, we're still talking, we're not communicating, but we're talking. This is an ordinance resoning property located on Versailles Boulevard across from Calais Circle, from C2 to a planned development of multi-parking and mixed-use commercial areas described in the village of a Versailles master site plan requested by the property owners. This is.
An ordinance.
That's an ordinance.
Resonant, you got to read it.
Is no zoning necessary?
Okay, move in second.
Okay.
That's enough. And there was also a notation too, they were checking on the deal concerning the DOT, they incorporated it, make sure they correspond to dictation except for by Mr. Branch.
Okay. John. Wait one second.
We didn't do anything wrong, we're just making sure we don't make any mistakes.
It's easier.
Legal Committee, Mr. Smith.
Okay, it's just the introduction of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a residential lease with Marigny French for the use of five parking spaces located behind 610 Murray Street and Block 45 with the original plot of the city of Alexandria.
At least if you're already in that area.
Move. All right, move for induction. All right, another one is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Alexandria weed and seed area for stirring committee.
Move.
It's another ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a professional services agreement with Charlie Allison to be the weed and seed program coronator.
Move.
Coroner.
Coroner. Okay, this is another ordinance authorizing the local coal sharing, share of Alexandria to the Gulf of Mexico flood study.
Need a motion.
Yeah, need a motion and a second on it, yeah. Move. Lewis, similar to, okay, you want to send it to final?
No, the explanation, you want, this explanation here is, will amend the 2007 capital budget adding funds for the study of the Chatham Lake Canal and the outfall.
Need a motion. Motion.
Do we need to reword?
Just want to hear those two words.
Oh.
Is that all, Mr. Smith?
I think so. We have anything else?
Utility Committee, Mr. Fowler.
No report.
Community Development, Mr. Marshall.
No report.
Personnel, Mr. Johnson.
No report.
Public Safety, Mr. Marshall.
I have an ordinance authorizing the mayor to a contract with the Fire Union Local 540.
Move.
Try, come out here.
Okay, and an ordinance authorizing the mayor into a written cooperative endeavor agreement with the Rapide Symphony Orchestra for the production of an interdenominational frat service offering musical selections recognized in the city's religious history.
Move.
Did you say take up our offer?
For council.
Council.
And here's a resolution authorizing the Division of Community Services to submit to the Louisiana Department of Culture, Recreation and Tourism an application for event sponsorship of the 2008 BBQ Festival Q and On the Red to be held March 14th and 15th, 2008.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Smith.
Are you planning an official kickoff? The reason I'm saying that sponsors, of course, as they're working on their budgets down the Cali year, are probably trying to do that as we speak. I didn't know if we were going to do a kickoff a little bit earlier.
Well, before we actually announced the dates or doing an actual kickoff, I already contacted the sponsors. The ones that we've had, I already made contact with them to work us into their budget for the upcoming year. Okay, well, yeah, we could do that.
All in favor? All in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
How are you, Mr. Fowler?
No report.
Economic Development, Mr. Lawson.
About those two, you had, Chuck.
We've already adopted them.
Where?
We did a meeting this morning.
Okay, all right.
We have three persons, Mr. Wayne Jenkins.
Mr. Wayne Jenkins, come to the mic.
I'm Representative Louisiana Baptist Convention. We have asked for variance on the use of a lot on Bolton Avenue about two months ago. Reverend Charles Veal had asked about the use of the lot. According to his understanding, we had use of the lot as a part of a SML celebration, family fun days this weekend. We've got about seven events that are taking place all over the area, but this was one of them, and it's down on Bolton Street. It was a block party that's planned for about 1,000 people. We've got people coming in from outside and got everything planned, but we understood that we had use of the lot, found out about two weeks ago, we did not have use of the lot. Proper channels had not gone through, and so then I talked to the attorney, city attorney. They faxed me over the forms, I filled out the forms, sent them back in, and now he called me yesterday and told me we had to have 30 days in advance. Well, we didn't know about the 30 days, and it's one of those things, it's just a problem that developed because a person thought that they had done the right thing and not done the right thing, and we had not gone through the proper channels. But we need the use of the lot right there in order to have this event. We've got one down at Lower Third, we've got one in Pineville, one on the other side, actually the other side, close to the Louisiana Baptist Convention building. We've got a bull riding event, we've got motocross events, and we've got a Veterans Day event, all taking place this weekend, but that was the one that we had there that now we don't have a lot. We've done all the publicity and everything, thinking we had it.
Do we have a remedy?
I think we can make a special, can we do a special?
We're not authorized to do, only this body can do the variation, and I think the city attorney and I were just talking about it, we were concerned. We still need to have the regular building agreement done because somebody has to be responsible for something that large. Normally, we'd have a cooperative endeavor, or we wouldn't have had time to have entered into it, I think is what happened. We're recommending a variance, but this body's the only body that...
I saw a move.
I saw a move.
You used that area before?
No, we haven't used that particular area before.
This is for Sam.
No, and it's a free event, and it's food and games.
I'll have a meeting with them, they gonna be at...
Harry says only one caveat, is he gets to ride the bull for free?
As long as they're willing to sign.
We'll pay for him to ride.
They have to sign the regular bond requirements, just like anybody else, if there's one, and they have to sign the regular agreement saying they're responsible for the event, as long as they're willing to sign that now, you can, I guess you can do the variance and waive it, and they otherwise meet all of our requirements to do a cooperative endeavor, they just don't have it in place.
I would recommend we incorporate those in there then, and then you come by tomorrow morning and sign it, and if you can furnish whatever's necessary, it'll be okay.
All right, what do I need to come by and sign tomorrow?
You talking about the bond, man? I don't think... You have, as it... I would suggest you come here tomorrow morning, have it drafted, and you get, do what has to be done. Well, no, I want to make a motion that we grant, we grant the variance, you know, for them to use the lot.
We're talking about the same one over on Bolton.
You got every church in town.
It's a lot, lot right across from Community Center that's all about the city.
Franco Hunter, I met with them one time, they everywhere. They got kids, they got just about every church, and there's a diverse group all over town.
We don't have any problem, it just didn't follow the...
Yeah, I understand.
Y'all do the variance, we can make it.
Okay, all in favor?
Opposed, motion carries.
I need to see you tomorrow?
And they are, they are making...
Ms. Sandra Bright.
Sandra Bright.
I just have a little concern that I want to bring before the administrative body. On next week, there will be two public hearings from the city's Community Development Department related to proposed block grants. One is for, one of the hearings is Lower Third at Broadway Resort Center, and I think one on the 15th is at the Public Safety Complex. My concern is that the avenue, that the advertisement for the hearing is not reaching the targeted area. That if we take in consideration some other means that we could utilize, you know, to reach the people, because like I said, you know, the readership for the town talk, I mean, if I didn't read it, I wouldn't have known that they were going to be having the public hearing in the area. So that brings me back to the main question is, what is the status of the government access channel? That we've been having all these things that need to be on it? Or if we could use the reverse 911 system for the people that are in the target areas to give us, give them the information to allow them to come out and know about the meeting? Because like I said, even though the newspaper is the official tool for the city, the readership for the people that it's intended for is not going to be there.
Ms. Bright, the clerk just looked to me that they do have the information, they will be on Channel 4. They just got the information, and they will put it on Channel 4?
Do you know when? Because the meeting is Monday at 6 o'clock, which is Veterans Day. So, but it was in the paper last week, so if you have...
We'll give it, at least by tomorrow, we'll give it...
She makes an interesting point, as Bright does, on the reverse 911. Now we're talking, they use it for one of the community meetings. I think it'd be beneficial if we could target the area, I don't know how ambitious it is to do it at that time, but we can do the reverse 911. You can do that yourself, Chuck?
I could talk on the phone, but I could, it took a lot of programming, but no, it's not a hard thing to do.
Yeah, it's fun.
The chief, the department over at Allison, just need to get someone, a citizen, maybe Ms. Bright might want to... No, I'm just talking about the 911. You mean the reverse 911, you know, we could get a citizen to do it, to go down to the police department to do it. I'm just volunteering, you're the one to do it.
Mr. Mike Redman.
Gentlemen, last week you brought up the intention of building another walkway along Bayou Rapids. I feel that it's a waste of money. I know that a lot of you people think that there's a lot of fishermen down there, but I don't feel that there is, just like the walking trail. We put all that money into the walking trail and nobody uses it. The upkeep, the tax dollars, I mean, you got a lot of people could use Home Habitat for Humanity and money to go to them or to one of your skateboarders. Take a piece of our property and build a skateboard property on it. If you want to do something that the people will use.
I beg to differ with you, Mr. Redman.
All right.
And the people in my district, I guarantee you, you can go down just about any day and find somebody fishing along that pier. And along Bayou Rapids. Go down in front of the Pentecostal Church, and you will find people out there fishing along that trail. Because you may not go there, that doesn't mean that the people over there in that neighborhood don't need it.
I go across those bridges every day, and I never see anybody down there.
Well, maybe you're not looking. Maybe you're just tunnel vision. Well, Mr. Redman, I beg to differ with you.
Okay.
And I feel that the people in my district need to have some form of recreation, just like you want to keep the water out of your yard over on Elizabeth Street, the people in my district also need some improvements in their district.
How much money is it going to cost us to build that?
Well, it's not...
For such a few.
What do you mean such a few?
Such a few fish.
Because, because they aren't, they don't live in an affluent neighborhood?
I'm not saying anything like that, I'm saying...
That's what you're saying, because these people over there deserve the same benefits and the same services, sir.
They have places to sit down there. I am not talking about affluent or poor. You take your walking trail downtown, nobody uses that trail. How much money have we spent on it to build it, and then nobody use it, and plus the upkeep? That was a state, that was a state project.
That's still a tax sale. It was not done with city dollars. It was not done, but Mr. Redman, I beg to differ with you on Bayou Rapids Trail. Now, if that's, that's what you feel, those are your feelings, this is a freedom of speech, and this is the country, that's freedom. But I refuse to accept your comments about the people in my district that live in the Armel Quarters and the Enterprise Edition. I refuse to accept that.
Well, you can refuse it, this is good, but I'm trying to get what the rest of the people feel like. A lot of these business community do...
Well, those people put me in office, you didn't.
I have a slightly different spin on this whole thing. If and when we get the hotel open, when the downtown area is reworked, when the whole infrastructure translates into accomplishment, that will be used, that other area will be used, the Red River thing will be used, everything's going to be great. I just want you to live that long to see it happen. I'm a real judge.